And I call this January 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is roll call. Commissioner Donaldson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner McLeod?
Here.
Chair Wadi?
Here.
And I think we are expecting Commissioner Kern to be here momentarily. We'll move on to item three on the agenda, which are ex parte communications. Do any members of the commission have any ex parte communications to disclose?
I do, yes. At staff's request, I met with the applicants for the Portland Avenue project that will hear later tonight, and the idea was to discuss their design and things they can do, regulations, restrictions, all that sort of thing. So we met for about an hour. This was about, it was last month.
December 18.
Yeah, so we did meet.
Okay. Onto item four on the agenda. Item four is the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted on by one motion. If approved on the consent calendar, the staff recommendation will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the commission or a member of the audience requests to remove one of these items from the consent calendar. We currently have three items on the consent calendar. Item 4-1 are the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of December 11th. Item 4-2 is Planning Application 19-072, Design Review and Parking Exception for a Single Story Edition at 1502 Posen. And item 15-3, Planning Application 19-070, which is a conditional use for Kiritara Spa at 1488 Solano.
We do have a speaker card for item 4-3, the spa.
Okay, great. So we will take that one off of the consent calendars. Does anyone else have any concerns about items 4-1 or 2? Okay, why don't we?
I think the record should reflect that Commissioner Kent was here at 7:04.
Great. Do we have then a motion to approve the first two items?
So, yeah, I have no, no one's pulling any of the other items, okay. So then I'll move approval of the consent calendar except for 1498, whatever it is.
1488 Solano.
14 on Solano. So that would move approval of the minutes and the project at 1502 Posen Avenue.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing no opposed, that's, those two items are passed unanimously. And with that, they are approved and we're moving on and we will take item 4-3 off of the consent calendar and hear that item right now. Again, this is Planning Application 19-070, a conditional use for Kiritara Spa, 1488 Solano. Do we have a staff presentation at all?
Sure, we have a brief staff summary. Again, this is PA 19070, Conditional Use Permit for Kiritara Spa at 1488 Solano Avenue. The applicant is seeking a Conditional Use Permit for a massage establishment at 1488 Solano Avenue. The subject site is a 2,324 square foot lot within an existing 3,663 square foot commercial building built in 1940. The applicant is proposing a new massage establishment by the name of Kiritara Spa. The subject tenant space measures approximately 570 square feet. A maximum of five employees are expected to be on-site at any given time. The proposed operational hours are 11:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. daily. The proposed use does not increase the required off-street parking. A Conditional Use Permit is required for all massage establishments in the city of Albany. There are no exterior building modifications proposed under this project scope, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff before we turn it over to the applicant? Oh, okay. With that, is the project applicant for Kiritara Spa here, her representative? If you'd like to come up and give a brief presentation, yeah, please come up.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Guilfredo, and I'm here for, introduce Kiritara Spa. So, um... One second, sorry.
We have, do we have to give it to you, or do, I want to go with us?
You'll want to distribute it to the commission.
Sure.
I think we have seen all this on our agenda.
It's probably the packet, so, thank you.
So, what is Kiritara Massage? It's an ancient natural therapy that may help to reduce your ailments. It has been practiced for over 2,500 years. It's performed in a mat that rests on the wood platform. It's work on energy line. It focuses on muscles, joints, the head, fingers, and toes. And even massage your stomach, it helps promote circulation, health, and overall well-being. Both yoga techniques, it helps increase muscular flexibility and helps to relax your entire body. So, our massage therapies are licensed, certified, in California, and have ancient art, traditional Thai massage. While some client find Thai massage to be more intense than traditional massage at a spa, it should never be painful. And our massage therapies will check in frequently to make sure you are comfortable in the pressure and the treatment. We are passionate about providing the best care possible for our client, learning their areas of pain, so that we can help alleviate the tension.
Our Kiritara service, we have a traditional Thai massage, we have aroma oil massage, and we have herbal massage, and we have a reflexology massage. So, um, our traditional Thai massage is technique learning pressure, reflexology, energy line work. Aroma oil Thai massage is a massage that very light and medium pressure, long stroke. And herbal Thai massage, we use a hot herbal that we bring learning, and we make oil inside the herbal massage. It's like a ball, it's hot ball, and we press on, it's not too hot, like hot. It's just like medium, and it's all inside the ball is herb, like lemon glass, ginger, or kind of herbal, calming or something like that. And reflexology, we use a special tump, finger techniques, to work on a small area on your feet. And at the first customer, we, the first customer come, we have a form that, um... Yeah, we have a form that say, this one, I never gave it to you, this is a new one, it's like, yeah, form. So I think you better have one of this one.
Yeah, this is the intake form for the customer, the new customer. So they ask you for your health, like, do you have any injuries, or things like that? They have, they kind of marks, and it's the, yeah, it's for that, for allergies or things like that.
And this is the table that we will use in the massage spa. So the table will be looked like, a table like this, and the section of the room will be like this. And this is aroma or oil massage that we call. We will have about three traditional massage table, and we have one aroma massage. And we have total four table will be in there. So this is, look like when it's already built, it's look like this. And for, for the, for building, we, we not going to building outside the spot, or the street walk or outside the, in front. We just do, it's kind of like, we use wood to do, and by the section, very simple. It's very simple, and we use nice and clean, and good feeling when you go inside. And, and that's, that, that what we plan to do, the wood floor and clean, so nothing that to be built a lot or destroy every, any, a lot things. Just do, do just only the floors a little bit, okay? And we are on, we are a small family business that we just start to be a family business, and we will help, we, we hope you have fun with that, or any question, or something like that.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Nope. Okay, thank you, you can have a seat. Okay, well, we're right now just asking questions from commission, and we'll open it up for general public in just a moment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll go, oh.
Yeah, Steph? If you want to speak on this item, there are speaker cards at the back, and you can fill those out and hand them to me, and we'll, we'll call your name so you can come up.
Great. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. The first speaker is Philip Moss. Great, Philip Moss. And when your name is called, please go ahead and come to the podium, and you each have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Philip Moss, 912 Santa Fe Avenue, Albany. When we came up with the Solano Corridor Plan, this was the type of business that we did not want. And it wasn't because we're against spas or massage parlors. Solano Avenue, our desire was to have an open pedestrian-oriented businesses. This business closes itself off from the street. You know, it's, we wanted the pedestrian-oriented walk down the street, look into businesses, shop into businesses, and even if you read the Solano Corridor Plan statement, it repeats that. So, that I don't, I feel, there's two, two pieces here that this does not fit our plan. One is the Solano Corridor Plan. The second one is, pardon this, where in the, are they going to park? Right now, Santa Fe Avenue is, I come home, three to four days a week, my driveway is blocked. We have hair salon on Solano, they have eight stations, five of them park on the block in Santa Fe. We have a therapist's office near the corner. We're supposed to have one therapist in it, but they have three therapists in it. We have another building near the corner that faces Santa Fe that was supposed to have one dentist, now has five or six holistic health people in it that are taking appointments. And so, Santa Fe has gotten crowded. You can't park there, and with the hours they're going to operate, it's even going to make it worse. 8:30 at night, you know, I don't want to have to go out and move my cars, try to find parking. Luckily for me, when I built my house, I had a two-car driveway. My neighbors don't. They just have to hunt, find parking, we can't find it, our driveways are parked. I understand that this commission feels that there's no, not a problem, but there's nothing they can do about requiring parking for something like this, even though they're going to have five stations, five people for 11 to 8:30, and then they're going to have customers of three to five people an hour. You can see the impact that's going to have on the parking around this neighborhood. We've got bold restaurant, no parking. You have all these restaurants at the corner of Santa Fe and Solano that have no parking. There just is no place to put anybody else. That is a business that's going to have these hours and this type of parking impact. So I ask you that, take a look at the Solano Corridor Plan and the parking, and see how this is going to work, because the neighbors are pretty fed up on Santa Fe. Now, my suggestion is that the next person that comes in here pays, or jointly pays with the other businesses, to have controlled parking on Santa Fe Avenue. In other words, a parking permit. Because we've looked into it before, and it's expensive for the neighbors to all pay to be able to park on the street or at their house and not have their driveways blocked. So the businesses should start paying for some of these areas to restrict long-term parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
Yeah, the next speaker is Krista Meadows.
Hi, I just had a few questions because I'm new to the idea of the spa being put in place. I'm actually a business right next door at 1486. One of my main concerns is, yes, parking, because parking is a huge issue. I actually bike to work every day because there is no parking, which is great, but on rainy days, it makes it a little more difficult. I also have customers that constantly complain because there's no parking on Solano Avenue anywhere, and that's mostly because of all the employees from the nail salon and all the other shops around the avenue. All the employees park on the avenue and go move their car every hour and a half, or park on Santa Fe, which is impossible. So that's definitely one of my biggest concerns, but also another concern for me is that Solano Avenue has gone less and less retail space. There's nobody coming to shop on Solano anymore. It's not a destination for shopping. It's a destination to get your nails done, or some other service that does not bring income into the city. And I just struggle with why this city just constantly never brings in revenue in that sense for the city, because we're just constantly bringing in service which never has sales tax. So it does kind of a disservice to our city, I think, in that we always have these services. And the other thing is, I'm really wary, I know it's a family business, which is new to me. I didn't hear about that, but I was also very concerned about that look of what it represents to our city. We have a lot of young people now that go to the new place that is the drink things with the, I can't think of what they are. You know, we have a lot of young teenagers now that come right over to this area now because of that destination, so I, I don't know, maybe it's different than what I had assumed, because when I heard massage spa thing, I was just thinking of all the Solano, the San Pablo Avenue type of businesses that are really not that great. And I really kind of expect more from our city and our shopping on Solano, which is very minimal. We are a destination store, so I'm not worried about getting foot traffic, but it would be so nice to be able to actually have shops on Solano. Like he said, originally, our original intent of Solano Avenue is a shopping place that neighbors and people can go and stroll the avenue. And that's not what it currently is right now. It's just nail salons and restaurants. So, anyway, those were my biggest concerns about it, and I'm just hoping that it's something that would actually benefit our city instead.
Let me ask you a quick question, what, what store do you have, what kind of business?
The jewelry store.
Jewelry store, alright.
So people come from really far away from us, because we've been in business for 45 years. So they all know us, and they know to come to us, and so it, it would just be nice to actually have retail stores on our avenue. Therapy made a big difference. A lot of people come and they shop at therapy, they, they'll actually walk two blocks, and they'll come to another store, "Oh, we were shopping at therapy," and vice versa. So I've talked to the therapy owner lady there too, and it's the same kind of thing. It's, so it's kind of interesting to see that the shopping doesn't really exist where we are, right? So much, it's more Safeway and restaurants and horrible parking for everybody, because there's so many employees and people going to nail salons, so.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item?
I don't have any.
Nope, okay. Seeing that public comment is closed, and we'll turn it back to the commission for discussion. Does anyone want to jump in here first?
Oh, well, let me start. Alright, where to start on this? So this comes to us as sort of, this would, would not come to office if it weren't a massage parlor application, is my understanding. And that because the massage parlor operation has a special status under the law that has to get, come to us. Otherwise, this would have been permitted over the counter. And I, I hear the comments, and I've heard them before as well. I know there is a lot of concern about massage parlors. My gosh, they've gone through state regulations from going back 15 years now, I guess 2009, and then one bill through the legislature, and another one in 2015, that tried to regulate them, and the state then subsequently has greatly increased the requirements for having a massage license. The, the paperwork that this massage organization would, would require people to sign is very, is very clear, and I've listened to the presentation tonight of the applicant, and I don't think this is a kind of a seedy operation that we've seen before that can lead to prostitution or that kind of thing at all. I don't think that's the case here at all. I think it's a legitimate therapeutic massage operation is what they're proposing to do, Thai massage. So, it has come to us, nevertheless, this would be, it's only 570 square feet in the space. It's a very small storefront, and it would normally just be permitted, just right off the bat, except for the use of massage. So that brings us to the question of, of, of two things that Phil brought up, that the appropriateness of having this sort of transparent front on, on this one shop along, along Solano, and the parking, the potential of parking impacts. So, I think Phil's point is well-taken about, about having a storefront closed, kind of closed on Solano, but I'm thinking back to, you know, what used to be there, well, Fisher's used to be in this spot, and before that, the Christian Science Reading Room was there. No?
We've been there for forty-five years. We were next door.
Yeah, okay, I'm, okay. But I'm thinking of the, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of other uses on Solano that do have, do not have a lot of, of activity. And the reality is that retail is not doing well, not only on Solano, but everywhere. It is so hard to do in retail, and what is evolving, and we have no control over that at all, is personal services. And, and restaurants. Solano was becoming restaurant-centric. Bold across the street from this is really successful, has a huge fan following, and probably is a big, a big reason why you're having so much parking problem along, along that area, is a part of it. So, I don't know how many, how the parking demand for this, for this organization would be. I doubt if they're gonna be busy all the time, all day, all the, all the hours they're open. I hear the, the concerns about their hours of operation, which will cover the afternoon and evening, which is probably the peak time for parking demand in this part of Solano. But I, I still think that it looks to me like it's, it's an above-the-board use. I think the applicants are genuine, and, and that they will be offering appropriate Thai therapeutic massage, and that it is a very, is a small business. It has a small span of the, a small width of space on Solano. And while I, while I do worry about having closed storefronts and, and lack of activity on the street front, I think I'd be okay with this business going into this slot, into this, into this one slot. And I'm not very concerned that it might become an illegitimate business, or a problem for the police department in any way, or, or somehow corrupting of the, of the values of our, of our, of our society. I don't think that will be the case. I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a personal services kind of business. We're seeing more of those in Solano. And, and we have other spas coming in that have slightly different kinds of services. We've seen them on, mostly on the side streets, but here in, on Solano, in Berkeley and in Albany. So I think I, I think I support the project, support the application. Mm-hmm. I don't know.
Mr. Kennedy?
Sure, two comments. Yeah, I kind of was stuck on the closed storefront. I don't agree. There's another Thai massage place on San Pablo, I think, right down the base of Washington, and that's a very lit storefront, it's got decorations in it, always have a receptionist there, I'd walk by it there. So I don't, this isn't the, the kind of massage place that would try to seal itself off. There's no, there's no reason they wouldn't have an open front. I mean, they're obviously gonna have curtains where someone's getting a massage, but I don't see it being a closed-off front. This use. I don't, so also, I don't see it being a low volume, and I don't see it being high volume. Being a low-volume, small place, the, many of these would actually create less traffic, right? If you had to put this farther away, everybody's gonna drive to it. So people that wanna get a Thai massage need to go to where they give Thai massages. If you have several dispersed around, then there's possibility of biking or walking exist. Whereas if they're pushed out to the outskirts because people are afraid there might be something they're not, then that's just adding to traffic. The, so the, this is a two-story building, right? I kind of missed that part. And we're just talking about the lower bottom, or?
The spot.
The only bottom?
The spot's only on the front.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Right, okay, good. So I don't see it as a being, as creating a whole bunch of traffic, so I'm, I would support the project.
Commissioner Jennings?
Sure, I, I generally agree with everything the fellow commissioners have said. One thing I did just wanna clarify while I'm thinking about it is that in the findings, the draft findings that are attached to the staff report, there's a reference in finding one to the massage use being supplemental to an expansion of the existing skincare establishment. I think that might have been a holdover from a different set of findings, so would ask that staff revise the, the findings to reflect that. But I do think that, you know, this seems like a legitimate business, and I, I hear that, you know, the interest in having perhaps a different kind of business there, but, you know, that's, we don't, we don't hold out for, you know, better uses to, to come along, as long as they meet our criteria. And so, you know, knowing the, the struggles that retail in general is having, and the fact that this is, you know, this is not the only vacant storefront on Solano, I think it's a relatively modest use, and I'm willing to support it.
Mr. McLeod, do you have any?
Yes, I agree with the comments made already. I support the project. I don't think it's gonna be a detriment to the street at all. I think it's great to have a health and wellness-type place that will serve our community. Regarding parking, you know, if we denied a business access to Solano because of parking, then we're gonna say no to most businesses that would come in. I think it's just not gonna be possible. So where, where do you draw that line? I mean, you can't not draw that line in effect. Well, there are other solutions, and may be for parking on Solano, and maybe two-hour residential parking zones around Solano. That's done in many, many cities where residents can park all day with their permit, and visitors can only stay two hours. So there are other solutions for that. I'm not too worried about it being closed off at the front. It looks like it's fairly open on the inside. It's not closed, small rooms. It's open with just curtains and platforms. So I support the project, and I wish them much success, so.
Well, I won't duplicate other comments that my fellow commissioners have said, but just two, two additional points that I wanted to make on this, just looking sort of at recent precedent that we've had. The, at least since I've been on the commission, we had Supple Skincare that came in on the lower part of Solano for a massage authorization that was similarly on the consent calendar and approved, and as somebody who has now frequented Supple, I think it's a wonderful addition to the lower part of Solano. I know it's a slightly different environment there in terms of the sort of amount of foot traffic and the parking, so I understand that perspective, but in terms of what we're here looking at from the land use perspective at least, the land use of massage is not inherently closed off to the street. I think Supple, for example, has a very welcoming storefront, and I think has overall been a really great addition to Solano. So I don't think it's inherently sort of a deactivating land use in and of itself. And I've been a patron of many Thai massage places in San Francisco and across the country. I tend to get massages, I feel like, when I travel, so I've, I've gone to a bunch of them. And they aren't inherently sort of deadening of the street. I do think the devil's in the details of how every individual business designs its storefront. I would be very open to including as a condition of approval or requirement that the existing storefront remain transparent and unobscured. I think that's a really reasonable component. You know, no film on the windows, no closed curtains at all time, no boxes against the front, so that it is inviting storefront, because I do think there is this inherent struggle between retail and a sense of pedestrian-oriented sort of walkability, where you can peek in, see what's going on, and I think that's really important to preserve on Solano, but that can be done, I feel like, in conjunction, sort of through design, in conjunction with this land use. So I'd be open to that. And then the other project, just sort of as a point of precedence that we recently approved, was the Little Bear Music School, that I think was much more closed off at the street, architecturally speaking, but I think we were all in consensus that it was a great addition for creating sort of a complete community and offering the arts and, you know, kids' activities and all of that, and felt like it was just an overall, a good balance to the otherwise, you know, the other types of land uses, even though it might have a lower foot traffic throughout the day. So I do think there have been other land uses that are not hardcore retail, but that do certainly bring a type of foot traffic, and, and a retail component where it's not all, you know, pre-organized appointment-only, closed locked doors at the street and all of that. I do know from my other experience with massage establishments that I believe some of the requirements prohibit there from being, you know, a locked door at the front, and sort of the whole doorbell situation to avoid the less desirable element of where sort of massage can lead, and I presume all of those conditions would be held over on this. So I would certainly be comfortable, particularly with the condition of maintaining a transparent storefront as it currently exists, and moving forward and approving the land use with that condition. So, anyone wanna make a motion?
Yep.
Well, I guess I'll try to make a motion then. With that, then I'll move approval of application, planning application nineteen oh seven oh, conditional use permit for Kiratara Spa at fourteen eighty-eight Solano with the following additions. The staff, the finding number one should be revised, because there's an error in that, and the staff can take care of that, and then an additional condition that requires the applicant to maintain an open and transparent storefront at, at the very front of the building. Is that appropriate? Is that okay? Okay?
Second?
Well, second?
Great, with that second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing none opposed, that project is unanimously approved, and we will move forward. That takes us off of the consent calendar now and onto item five on the agenda. Item five is public, general public comment. It is worth noting that public comment is for folks desiring to address the commission on an item that is not otherwise on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have been made aware there may be folks in the audience who are here to speak on a project that we're having a study session on next week, if that is the case. We do just wanna remind folks that we are only agendized for the item, are speaking about the items that are agendized on this agenda, but you're welcome to speak at public comment, but you are limited to three minutes, so.
I do have one public speaker card, Patrice Ame.
Patrice? Come on up. You have three minutes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm Patrice Ame. I've been living in Albany for more than forty years, and I'm located in Gateview, which is on the other side of the hill, and I am extremely alarmed by the plan to destroy Albany Hills Park, which is a unique wildlife reserve with many endangered species. A systematic program of destruction of endangered trees has been going on. Pine trees of rare type, which are native to Northern California or even the Bay Area, have been systematically targeted and destroyed in, for like the last two years, but especially in the last few weeks. So the developer, it used to be some sort of Chinese people, who now are American because you can buy your citizenship very easily, and this, some of these people or people related to them have decided to make, on the hills, a number of homes, like forty-six apparently, which will all be multimillion-dollar homes. They will sell up to four million dollars, without counting the fact that you have a view which is unique in the entire world. Everybody knows about the Golden State and the Golden Gate, and this is smack dab in front of the Golden Gate. So this is going to be worth a fortune. That park has resisted efforts of promoters already in like the nineteen twenties. At some point, they wanted to cut the hill like they did for where the racetrack is. There used to be another hill there. It was completely cut. They wanted to do the same thing on Albany Hill. It was top at the time. And now we have this sudden effort to, to do this, which has been unfortunately coordinated with the city, because the city has been removing a lot of trees on top of the hill and diverse ground access for the whatever. There was already a road, they built a new road. They cut a lot of trees, they still are cutting trees, and I think it's a huge mistake. We need affordable housing, which means that we need more buildings like Gateview with hundreds of apartments. We don't need to have forty homes for multimillionaires. We don't need to make some Chinese-Americans or other developers wealthier than they already are. On top of that, we do not need to destroy a wildlife preserve. It's actually against international law, not just federal law, because there are a lot of migrant birds which are using the hill, and we will have to alert the Audubon Society and others, of course. This is very well-known by bird watchers. Albany Hills is famous in the entire United States to have a great number of very rare birds which get stuck for a number of reasons. So this project has absolutely to be stopped. If Albany Hills wants to solve affordable housing, it needs to make high rises along San Pablo and not destroy a wildlife park unique in the world.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here for public comment? Okay, with that, then public comment is closed, and we'll move on to item six, which are discussion and possible action on regularly agendized items. On the first item six dash one, this is for planning application nineteen zero five zero, design review and conditional use for a project at twelve fifteen Portland. And before we get started here, I believe two of us, including myself, need to be recused due to having real property interest within five hundred feet of this property. So with that, I will recuse myself and turn it over to Commissioner Jennings.
Great, thank you. And yeah, just to be-
Maybe we should say, I think other people are here, that, that this commission will have a special session a week from today on the application for the Hillside Avenue project.
Yes. That's what I was starting to say as well.
If you're here for that tonight, that won't happen tonight at all, and we had one comment and public comment. We're not, we can't respond to that or do anything about that right now, but we will have a special study session. It's been agendized for a week from tonight on the, on the project on, on Albany Hill off, off Pier Street. Okay.
And just to be clear, I was, I was gesturing in the audience, because I did just want to, to make sure you guys know that your project has been approved for the spa. You're free to go. Anyone else who is here for the spa or for twelve oh five Posen, you're free to go, of cour-, or sorry, fifteen oh two Posen, you're free to go. It's been approved. Of course, you're also welcome to stay, and we're not taking, I'm sorry?
You mean fourteen eighty-eight Solano.
Well, no, I said the spa, and then also fifteen oh two Posen, which was on the consent calendar. But, so, again, you're welcome to stay. I just wanted you to know, and we're not taking public comment right now, but if you wanted to make a, a comment on one of the agenda items, you're free to drop off a speaker card with staff.
I mistakenly said Hillside. So the project at eight three six Hillside will be heard tonight.
Yes.
I mistakenly said Hillside when I-
Side project will follow this, this project.
Yes. So the matters, again, just to be clear, the matters, we're still going to talk about our twelve fifteen Portland Avenue and eight thirty-six Hillside, as well as an item about a proposal for a forum on housing in Albany. Okay, thank you. And whenever staff's ready, we can hear the staff report.
Sure. Good evening, Commission members of the public. Once again, before you tonight is planning application nineteen zero five zero, design review and conditional use permit for a house level and two-level rear addition at twelve fifteen Portland Avenue. Some background on the property. The subject property is a five-thousand-square-foot lot with a five-bedroom, two-bathroom, one-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-four-square-foot home built in nineteen fifteen. City records show the following work done to the property. It's a lot of minor work. In two thousand and six to two thousand and eight, renovation took place. In two thousand and six, the property owner at the time received design review and conditional use permit approval through the Planning and Zoning Commission for a lower, lower-level addition. The project's scope at the time included lowering the basement level from six feet to eight feet, creating habitable space for the home. A conditional use permit was required to extend the existing non-conforming east wall, which was noted to be set back seven feet from the property line, where seven-six is actually required on corner lots. The site survey obtained by the current property owner indicates that the east wall is actually four feet ten from the property line. Recent review. The project was first reviewed as a study session item on October ninth, twenty nineteen. The commission provided feedback to the applicant and staff regarding project refinement. The project was scheduled for review and possible action at the December eleventh, twenty nineteen hearing. Due to the lack of a quorum from the commission, the project was carried to a date certain of January twenty-second, twenty twenty, or tonight. On December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, Commissioner McLeod and the applicant met to review the project to discuss further project refinement for the home. The project was modified and is before the commission tonight for review and possible action again. Here's a street view of the property as it sits today. And the current scope. The applicant applied for an ADU in twenty sixty and decided not to pursue the project scope. The home sustained water intrusion in lower level last winter due to insufficient waterproofing from the two thousand and eight construction. As a result, the applicant is proposing alterations to correct the failed construction as well as reconfigure the home. Project request, design review. Project request, design review. The applicant is seeking before you tonight, design review approval to lift the house approximately three feet and build 156 square foot two-level addition at the rear of the property. The project's scope also includes entire reconfiguration of the interior programming of the home, significant facade alterations, and a change to the architectural style of the home overall. Conditional use permit. The applicant is also seeking before you tonight, a conditional use permit to horizontally and vertically extend the northeast wall, which is set back four feet 10 feet, four feet 10 inches, sorry, where seven feet 6" is required. The overall project's scope would result in a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half, bathroom, 1,942 square foot home with a maximum height of 25 feet. Here's an existing elevation of the home. Here's the street view once again. And here was, here's an elevation of what was previously proposed at the study session. And here's what's proposed before you tonight. Proposed architecture. The applicant is proposing to completely alter the existing craftsman architectural style of the home. A modern aesthetic is proposed for the new home, or for the home remodel. Existing window patterns will be altered to accommodate the interior programming. The front entry porch is proposed to be relocated to the ground floor. The proposed height is also increases in result of a more box-like appearance of the home due to the interior ceiling heights raising from eight to 10 feet and then eight to nine feet on the top floor. The rooftop deck, a new rooftop deck matching the entire footprint of the home is proposed, and an exterior staircase at the rear of the home is proposed to reach said roof deck from the second story of the home. Conditional use permit. A site survey was included with the project's middle and indicates that the east wall is currently set back four feet 10 inches from the property line, where seven foot 6" is required per the zoning code. The applicant is proposing both horizontal and vertical extensions to the existing non-conforming walls in order to accommodate the two-level addition. And this is just diagrams illustrating the subject area for the conditional use permit. You'll see the two-level addition proposed at the rear facade. Parking. There's an existing detached garage in the northwest corner of the home, of the property that is accessible from a curb cut on Talbot Avenue. When the applicant pursued the ADU scope, approval was granted to relocate the curb to Portland, which would improve site distance for the new driveway. The same parking scheme is proposed and will create two off-street parking spaces in a tandem configuration for the home. Staff has not received any correspondence regarding the project proposal. Project is categorically exempt from CEQA review. Conclusion. The applicant has requested that the plans be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Draft findings and conditions of approval are included should the commission decide to take action. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions, and the project applicant is in the audience as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions for staff?
I thought I saw a section that showed a, there was a crawl space or 18 inches below. It's not on slab? Or is that the older plan? This is on, is this on slab?
I think there is still a crawl space proposed, but we can look at the-
A5, HA5 shows the crawl space.
Yeah.
So, finished floor carpet. Oh, I see, it's still recessed. Okay. It's crawl space, but it's still recessed down, so. I was wondering why there weren't any more steps. Let's go figure that out.
I have a couple of questions if you don't. Okay, so first off, and you know, I'm sorry if this is putting you on the spot, but I just want to make sure I understand why this is, this is coming to us without a recommendation of approval. And I know that the application has been pending for a while, so I'm curious if staff, reading between the lines, I am inferring that staff does not recommend this for approval. And I'm curious if you can talk a little bit about why, or if that's a correct assumption.
So we're not making a formal recommendation tonight. We had some communications with the property owner at the end of last year, and she had requested that this come back to the commission. Obviously, there was communication with Commissioner McLeod, and so what's before you tonight is the result of those discussions. And so we've given you the conditions and findings, and really are leaving it up to the commission as to make the determination if you find it compliant with the design guidelines.
Okay. I guess to put a finer point on it, is there, are there criteria that staff feel, that have not been met, or findings that maybe, that staff feels have not been supported by the applicant? And I'm not trying to hold you to this, I'm just truly trying to understand why, because I feel like usually we have a pretty clear recommendation and analysis, and there's a lot of information here, but it's, I can't tell what, where the disconnect is.
Yeah. I think in general, the plans and their refinement are closer to meeting the intent of the guidelines. We obviously had had a lot of back and forth. You'd had a study session early on in this process where a lot of suggestions were made for refinement, and so the totality of that refinement has been incorporated in what's before you tonight. I mean, I think with any project, there's always room for modification, but this is the extent to which the applicant has been willing to comply with that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Well, I guess just one question. It came up when we were talking about the requirements for open space. The roof deck is not required for open space.
That's correct. It's totally elective.
The lot, the roof area on the lot is sufficient to meet the requirements for open space on the lot, so I just wanted to clarify that. There was one other kind of discrepancy in the floor area ratio calculations. From what I saw, the staff had a higher floor area ratio, and that was due to maybe a foyer or interior hallway being deducted by the applicants, but I think only the stairwell, where it's too much space basically was deducted, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's where that little discrepancy came from, but.
I have one more question. Didn't we address rooftop terraces on our guidelines? Did we add some language regarding that?
I think we have some, some general language under usable outdoor space. It's been the practice, though, with the commission to look at them on a case-by-case basis.
We didn't do any kind of privacy guidelines or?
Not, not specifically for roof decks.
And then, just one more question before we turn it over to the applicant. Am I missing any information from the applicant or any analysis from staff about the extension of the non-conforming walls? I mean, I see the statement in here that, that there is a non-conforming wall extension request, but I'm not seeing the typical analysis that we typically have when we make those decisions.
So there are findings that are included that begin on page 16 that address the conditional use permit, and those are the standard findings from, from the city's municipal code.
I see, okay.
And just to clarify, it's the wall along Talbot Street, right, that is the-
That's correct. That's the non-conforming wall.
So, next to the sidewalk, not next to another building per se. If that were a typical Albany side yard, the requirement would be three to five feet, depending on the lot width.
If it was an interior lot, it would have a requirement of five feet.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're ready for the applicant to present, if you would like to do so.
Hello, I'm Amy Dahl. I own the home, thank you, with my husband, and we, our two daughters also own the home. One is nine and one is four. We've had water intrusion about a year ago, and we, our desire was to raise the house just a few feet to prevent groundwater from coming in. We've been told it's going to be an ongoing issue. I think we're all in agreement, it's going to be an ongoing issue unless we address it. I think the previous owners pushed, did, made some not-so-wise decisions, you know, and that's not in dispute. So the house, just repairing the slab is not really a long-term solution. It's just abandoned. We desire to raise our house, and also waterproof it. That's really all we needed. We originally intended no aesthetic changes to our house besides that we don't want front steps. My parents come over, they, my mother cannot climb the steps into my home. People complain, you know, because there's water in our front stairs and there's water intrusion, the tile on our front steps is constantly coming off, and we're replacing it, and it's coming off, like, so it's just not something we want. We want to be able to age in place, which is a phrase I got from actually the design guidelines, as something, you know, for the long-term plan of Albany, is to be able to have a place as accessible as, you know, long-term. So we would like to have the entrance be to the first floor and have the living area be on the first floor. So we are changing the interior programming. I believe it's also in the design guidelines to have the living area and the kitchen in the front of the house. It's more desirable to us to have the living area and the kitchen on the sunny side of the house. So because, you know, we're borrowing money and we're changing our house to, for necessary repairs, you know, you might as well borrow more of this fictional money to make it the home that you want, and have this be the home that, you know, we will not have to do similar type scope of renovation again. So that is our intention. And there's been a lot of back and forth, and I'm not here to point fingers, I'm here to get my, my house fixed. Right now, we're living in the top floor, insulation, there's no insulation, it's cold. The insulation got wet and had to be removed for our own safety, and we've been waiting, we applied in August for design review, and we are, this is our first hearing. We did have a study session, but no action was to take place. So we're presenting, you know, a design that would allow us to have this meeting. It took a lot to get here. It took a lot of submissions that are not listed of different designs, and starting from October 24th, our study session was October 9th, where we submitted what we thought had encompassed all of the suggestions that came from the commission. The suggestions that were made by planning were not made available to us by then, so, you know, we just only, you know, incorporated what was said to us by the commissioners, and we were not able to get back on the calendar to have a design review hearing. You know, we got a lot of, we got a lot of feedback, including calling the design guidelines requirements, which I have an email from the city planner that I'd like to submit, because I know the roof deck has been in question. We were not allowed to come before here without outdoor space, is my interpretation of this. So we were lacking in three of the design guidelines. There were, the guidelines were called requirements, and as a family, we just want to repair our home. So we added a roof deck. There's been a lot of back and forth, you don't have to read that whole email, but we do desire an ADU. We did apply for it in 2016 and didn't go for it because of the placement of the ADU before we had, with the sewer lateral to Portland, it would not have made sense to have any outdoor space on the back of our house, because the ADU would have to be too close to the house. Now we've worked that out. I don't know if I'm going too far into the weeds here, but there's reasons why the design has changed so much and why we have a roof deck. I also have this feedback, you know, we submitted changes in plans on October 24th. Again, our study session was October 9th, and eight days later, we got disresponse from the associate planner. I've highlighted some sections of it that, you know, anyway, we were not granted this hearing until now. It's been five months. We've been told we have to follow every design guideline. All we desire is to repair our home and lift it.
I just want to clarify one thing for the record. We had actually noticed this for the December 11th hearing, so there was intent to bring this to the commission for review in 2019, and because of a lack of a quorum, we obviously had to continue it to the next available hearing date, which is this evening.
I completely understand that. There's no fault, through no fault of anyone, we were not able to appear in December 11th, but we have been trying for several months to appear. I, also, we've revised many times that, you know, we submitted our original FAR, and the associate planner sent back other, another FAR. The FAR does, I don't even have to pass this to you, because it doesn't really have to be an issue now that ADU, for building an F, ADU in the future, FAR will not come into question at all. So it doesn't really matter to me whose FAR we use, but if, if you don't mind, please presenting my FAR, it should be part of the record. The reason why there's a discrepancy in the FAR, and this is what the associate planner showed us, or sent to us to correct. So while this table is confusing, I've read the code, and it, you're supposed to count the envelope of the building times two and then subtract a certain amount of square footage for the stairs, which is how my- How my FAR. What this table indicates is that you should calculate, is misleading. It looks like you should calculate the exterior envelope of the building twice, the first and second floor, and then add the stairs back in, and then subtract the deductions. That leads you to include- Putting the area of the stairs three times and then subtracting once, which doesn't actually make any sense. So that's why there's a discrepancy between planning and me on the FAR. And if you zoom out, I copied the code, please, if you don't mind. So the square footage of the footprint, the bottom and below the stairs should be calculated for the purposes of the FAR, and then a deduction. You should not count it three times. So that's why there's a discrepancy leading my existing FAR to be less than the city planning. And that might be something you want to discuss internally, but that's the way I read the So as, you know, these revisions have been costly. We've been told we need outdoor space. I've written a letter, that was part of the packet, on how I feel like we're satisfying each and every design guideline. As I've said many times, our desire is to repair our home and have safe living conditions. It's been five months. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I could, few questions. First of all, yes, I totally sympathize that you want to repair your home. That's not a question. I don't think anyone here doesn't want that. I think we all sympathize with the, sometimes projects are more complex than they need to be. I think, I think the panel struggles, I'm struggling with some of the aesthetics because it just, it's not, I mean, I don't know if you got, I don't know if you got an architect or designer, but the interior works quite well. I see the space, I'm not so concerned with the FAR, you're in, you're in the range, so it works. I'm not gonna, well, I guess we're gonna discuss it, I bear, why did you, explain again why you think you went for the rooftop terrace?
Right. The roof deck was specifically because of the city planner's email saying that we've, we cannot have a hearing without satisfying the outdoor space requirements. She had suggested that we move our living area back to the back of the house so that we have a patio door on the exterior, the back of the house, because we cannot project any further onto the Portland or Talbot side of our house, we're too already non-conforming. So why don't you reprogram to make it a patio door in the back? I did ask at that point, what are the requirements, or what are the, is there anything I can see on the roof deck? I don't see any, anything in the municipal code or anything, and she confirmed there's no requirements in the roof deck, so long as it conforms with the existing height requirement, or the height requirement of 28 feet and all of that. So there were no requirements, and that seemed like the simplest way. Also, my designer did, he did encourage me to do that, because it's something I desire as low maintenance, so there's no roof to replace, there's, there's no requirement to kind of maintain a roof if I have a roof deck. The other things are, I can still have solar, and it's easily accessible from the top of the roof. I mean, that's down the line, that's not part of the scope, solar, but, I mean, the roof deck is to satisfy the outdoor space design guideline, which has been presented to me as a requirement.
I want to clarify something, again, for the record. What was referenced here in, with respect to usable outdoor space, I made a friendly suggestion over email, and I was very clear in saying that, in fact, it is just a suggestion, it can be taken into, you know, consideration, it can be rejected, it's really not up to me. But the intent was to actually, as we see in a lot of homes, you have an indoor-outdoor flow from the main living quarters into the backyard. That was the intent there. It's not a mandatory requirement, but it's certainly something that the commission looks at when they're looking at the complete project.
I would like to point out that my home, as it exists, does not have an outdoor And it was presented to me as a requirement.
Does not have an outdoor space. So, what am I missing here? So, why doesn't it have an outdoor space? Why, what is, what is the block from just leaving, walking out the back door and accessing the backyard?
That was not allowed to be presented to the commission. When we had that presented, we had a back door in that back bedroom on the first floor and we were told that we did not have outdoor space. That's the email that I presented with green highlighting from the planning, the city planner.
So, the flow is awkward, but you still have space, you still have rear yard space.
There's a rear yard, right? It shows on the plans.
Yes, we have a yard.
Okay.
We were not able to get on the schedule with the, two back doors to the backyard. We were not, we were told we would not be scheduled.
Well, those are recent additions, the back doors.
I'm sorry? No, they're not recent additions, the back doors were always there. The recent addition is the landing, balcony and the roof deck satisfy the back, the outdoor space design guideline.
So, I know, we're probably gonna have some more discussion, but are there any other questions that?
No.
Want to ask the applicant while she's up?
No.
No? Okay. Are there any, thank you. Are there any speaker cards or anyone who would like to make public comment on this item?
I have not received any speaker cards regarding this item.
Okay.
I just want to ask-
Not seeing any other hands raised, so we will close the public comment on this. And then, did you want to make one more statement?
I did. Several of our neighbors have emailed the planners, you know, in support of our project and in support of being able to rebuild. I don't think that those were submitted, but that, I don't know if that counts as public comment. The other thing is, we have revised and revised and revised several times. And some of them appear on the first page of the conditional use permit where it says we've been, days to review, 128 days or whatever it says. We've submitted and we've revised many, many times. Now, I think even in the, in the sample findings, it addresses each one of the guidelines. At this point, we don't know where to go from here if we cannot move forward. We had no intent of spending another winter with no insulation. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just to be clear, the public comment period is closed, so we'll turn it back to the commission for discussion.
Okay. Can someone explain to me the whole open space issue?
I don't understand the open space issue, so I'm hoping that Ann can-
Okay, so I'm happy to clarify it, yeah. So, what that stems from was an exchange that I had with the applicant. And so, I have here an email dated Monday, November 4th, 2019, where I explicitly stated that I wanted to clarify my comments, suggestions that I had made regarding potential modifications to the design. And I specifically noted that the applicant has to live in the home and it has to meet the needs of she and her family. In general, city staff may offer suggestions, but it's ultimately up to the project designer and homeowner to prepare plans that satisfy the requirements of the residential design guidelines and also meet livability needs. So, to be clear, the roof deck is certainly an option available, but it's an elective thing and it's not something that city staff has imposed, it's something that the applicant desires to incorporate.
So, you were kind of fast, I was catching it all. So, there was required to add more open space than is currently in the yard?
No. There, there is no specific requirement for, like, a quantifiable amount of open space on R1.
It's just a suggestion that you could add a patio or-
Precise. It was suggestive in nature.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Right. Okay. So, I guess I'll jump in. I'm not wild about the design, but I see the, the struggle here and it's like a project designed by committee, I don't know if it's gonna get better with more committee input. But the biggest thing that really bothers me is the rooftop deck. It just seems weird having this kind of flat roof with a bunch of people hanging out up there. I don't know if it's ever gonna be used, it's just some kind of, now I'm learning it was done because you thought it was part of the code. And, and I don't know if it's, it seemed like a lot of expense for something you're not gonna use and it's not gonna be pleasant up there just in a spare and flat space. So, that's my biggest objection to the plan is, whether you need that big staircase in the rear going up to the rooftop terrace, it's awkward to get to and probably not that pleasant when you're up there, maybe inexperienced once in a while, but not a hangout place. So, other than that, I don't think the entry is all that attractive, but it's okay. I mean, looking at the other, not everybody has beautiful entries, it'll service. I think the building looks rather institutional rather than kind of a warm house, but it's efficient and clean and works, so the interior is laid out well, so I understand the need to get moving on it. Even the awnings to me look very kind of industrial rather than warm and friendly. So, I'm, my, I guess I'm just gonna focus on that one big issue, which is the rooftop, which I think is a lot of expense for little gain and maybe it was a misunderstanding that led you to believe it was needed. So, that's kind of my comment.
Thanks.
Well, why don't you go first?
Okay. Sure. Yeah, I, I share a lot of the, the same sentiment. I'm also not frankly wild about the design, but I do think that the applicant has made a real good faith effort to try to respond to, to comments and acknowledge that, you know, that the guidelines, although, you know, we put a lot of time and staff put a lot of time into trying to make them, you know, thoughtful and, and useful, they are still guidelines and there's a lot of room for interpretation in there. I do think that it's an improvement over the original design we were presented with and given that, you know, I, I haven't heard any particular, you know, response to my question whether there's something that staff thinks is, some particular thing that staff thinks is lacking here. And I think we have evidence to make all of the findings that we need to make. I'm, you know, I'm, under the circumstances, willing to support the project. I do, I, I also tend to agree that the roof deck is unnecessary and unlikely to be used and I would encourage removing it. I don't know if I would require that if it's something that the applicant actually wants at this point, but not crazy about it. Thanks.
Yeah, I did meet with them and we tried to figure out some things and, you know, I did point out that I didn't think you needed the roof deck for any requirement. And it does seem way, way bigger than you would ever actually need or use. I mean, you could put a hundred people up there almost with the size it is, size that it is. On the other hand, trying to make it smaller and having some sort of partial railing or something I think could look really odd. I think the windows have gotten better, except the front is still a little, I mean, I don't really like the big picture windows so much in the front. And I did suggest at our meeting that the railing for the roof deck be lowered, it's at 48 inches high above your interior level. I think if you lowered that, that would help reduce that visual a little bit, make it more of a, kind of just a smaller decorative railing over a parapet would look better. You know, I, I don't mind the more modern aesthetic, the kind of hanging awnings or something we're gonna see on the Hillside project that we're gonna see in a few minutes. I don't mind those at all. And I do appreciate trying to break up the massing with different materials, kind of reducing its height in that sense and giving it a little more texture. You know, the, the stairway in the back, kind of hang off the back, it, it, you know, I'm a little ambivalent about that also, but I don't, wouldn't say you can't do it. But I do kind of agree with Commissioner Kent that it's maybe such a big space that, you know, I don't really see how you'll use it per se. I mean, you can go up there and put a little table, but it's gonna feel like you're out in the big sea of a roof deck. I mean, you could put your solar panels up there and have access to them. And I do appreciate the desire to get this going and it was not anyone's fault, we didn't have a quorum, you would've had a hearing last December and that was no one's fault. So, I do understand it's dragging on and I do understand the desire to lift it. And I do agree that the interior floor plan works much better, it just seems a lot better to have the kind of main public spaces of the house on the ground floor and easy access for elderly people, your family, that's fine. And then, you know, it just does seem like a much more rational floor plan that you, than what you had before where essentially everything was lifted and the ground floor was put on the second floor and kind of stayed there as a previous lifting. So, I think I can support this. I would kind of like to see the big picture windows maybe broken up a little bit more in the front, some kind of dividers or, I mean, we talked about kind of using one module or one similar sized window, I mean, breaking those up with some side lights would help, I think. So, I mean, the only real question for me would be the roof deck. And, question to you, it's not required, I mean, it's not required because you have a yard and that does satisfy your open space requirements. I mean, it's also kind of implicit in the lot coverage limits that we have so that if you removed it, that would be fine also, but that would be up to you. It might be something that you find is quite expensive when you go to price it out and the price of railings and things, metalwork is expensive these days. So-
So, maybe we approve it with the deduct alternate, they don't have to put the railing on, kind of thing.
Yes. I would, I would agree with that.
That'd be fine with me, that you could remove the roof deck and the railings if you so desired. You know, it's an unusual element, not really something you see in, in Albany very often. I've seen one in Berkeley, a couple in Berkeley. They tend to be kind of set back and smaller.
Yeah, they can be done well and really nestled in, but you want to be feel comfortable up there. I don't think this is gonna be a comfortable-
Well, there's kind of a lack of intimacy when you're sitting up there. It's gonna, you're gonna be sitting on a very, very large space, open space, which, you know, there are ways to deal with it. You can put plants and potted plants and things, but that's kind of an afterthought.
So, would you support a, a condition that says, or not even a condition, but basically a clarification that the roof deck is, should be considered optional?
Yeah, I would support that and leave it up to the-
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Applicants. Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't say that now that we've approved it, that they have to do that top railing in the roof deck. Doing a flat roof is fine and, you know, at some point, you may want to put solar panels up there. There would be plenty of room for that. Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah. Do you have someone in the language in front?
Right.
You want this one?
I move to pass, pointing item 19 dash 050 for 1215 Portland Avenue with the caveat that the rooftop railing and stairs accessing it are optional and not necessarily part of the approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. Your project has been approved. There is a 10-day appeal period, so I don't know if you have story polls up, but if you do, please keep them there. Thank you. Okay. All right. Back, back out here. We're on to item 6 dash 2. That is a study session for a planning application 19 dash 067. This is a design review for a new single-family home at 836 Hillside Avenue. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Good evening. I'll do a quick presentation. This is planning application 19 dash 067, design review for a new single-family home at 836 Hillside Avenue. Some background on the property. The subject property is a 6,264 square foot vacant lot located in the R1 zoning district with the hillside overlay. City records show that the P&amp;Z Commission approved the design, design review and a parking exception for a new 3,640 square foot home back in 2001. A lot line adjustment was granted by the city a few months later and a lot merger was approved in 2008. The single-family home was never pursued and the project scope was abandoned. Street view, here's the property as it sits today on Hillside. Project request, the applicant is seeking design review approval for a new four-bedroom, three, three and a half bathroom, 2,292 square foot home. On the lower level, in, the lower level is proposed to incorporate an entry courtyard, a two-car garage, guest suite, kitchen, dining and living room areas. The second floor of the home is proposed to accommodate two bedrooms, one bathroom, a complete master suite and laundry room. Here's a proposed front elevation of the home. And here's the proposed rear elevation. And the proposed north elevation on the side, note the side entry and side light to the home. And then, the proposed south elevation as well. These are the 3D renders provided by the applicant showing the massing along the hillside. And then, as requested by Commissioner McLeod, a rear 3D render from the bottom of the, of the rear yard of the property. Exceptional design. Projects which exceed a .45 FAR are subject to exceptional design as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The new home is proposed to be contemporary in architectural design. The exceptional design treatments for the home include an aluminum, aluminum frame windows, stucco and vertical board foam concrete siding, large wood paneled entry door with side light, skylights, balcony and deck areas with metal awnings. A landscape plan was also included with the submitted package illustrating the proposed entry courtyard, plantings, hardscaping and the built-in bench seating at the front. Parking, two off-street parking spaces are required for new single-family homes in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is proposing to comply strictly with these requirements. The garage is setback 15 feet from the front property line, which is also consistent with the R1 zoning regulations. Hillside over, hillside overlay regulations. The purpose of the hillside overlay is to apply specific height regulations for residential dwelling units due to the unique topographic conditions within this region of the city. Section 2024030B of the Albany Municipal Code specifies the regulations for this overlay with regard to maximum building height and minimum yards. And here's an excerpt, excerpt of that section verbatim and you'll note the B1 illustrates the maximum height requirements and B2 minimum side yard, minimum yards. With respect, spec to B1, the highlighted proportion applies to the subject property. And here, this is one portion of the project where staff would kindly request feedback from the commission regarding where the front maximum height should be taken from, whether that be at grade from the start of the building or if the height should be taken at the street front, at the front property line. Staff has received no correspondences for the, for this project. Project is categorically exempt from secret review. Recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review the project and provide feedback to the applicant and staff. Specific feedback would be requested on the interpretation of the hillside overlay height provisions within the zoning code and also obviously overall project design. This is a study session and no action will be taken. And with that, staff is happy to answer any questions. I see the applicant in the audience and she also has a presentation prepared as well.
Okay, great. Before we turn it over to the applicant, any questions for staff?
Will you go over the 28 feet and 28 feet 11 question for us again, for me again? Thank you.
Sure. So, let's see. This portion of the code states that, which one, let's see. In addition, for development on the downhill side of the street, the highest point of any structure shall not be greater than 28 feet above the elevation of the uphill street. So, when we look at what the applicant has called out in this exhibit right here, they call out 28 11 feet, however, that's measured at that point on the grade where the actual building starts. So, there was a little discrepancy internally about whether that should be measured there as the applicant has also measured or whether that be measured at this front property line.
If they measured at the elevation of the street like the code says, then what would the height be? Be less than?
It would be less than 28 feet.
Less than 28 feet.
And thus compliant with the zoning code if that's the interpretation that the commission makes.
Is the current location of the building at, like, at the front setback or is it further than the front setback?
It's at 15 feet.
At the front. At the front.
It's at 15 feet, the front setback area.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And I had, I had one other little, one other little comment, I think. I was confused by, in the staff report, by vertical foam siding and I guess, looking more closely at the plans, I think that's vertical form. So vertical, vertical, I think you had the phrase, you had vertical board foam and I just saw it again in the staff report.
Yeah, that's taken from the...
I'm not familiar with that, but, so I think they're vertical board forms is what, is what it looks like on the plan, so.
To be honest, I'm not exactly sure what this material is. This is taken from what the applicant has provided as far as siding, exterior cladding material, and there's, that's an attachment in the staff report as well.
Okay. It must be form boards, I think.
Yeah, I think so. Without questions, why don't we, why don't we turn it over to the project applicant to give a brief presentation?
Yeah.
So, yeah, this is, it was speaking from the height of the street level, but we, this red outline is maximum building envelope. So we are seven feet under the maximum.
Could you come to the microphone? I didn't, couldn't hear you there.
We're about seven feet from the maximum height if the height is taken from the street level. The red outline is the maximum building envelope.
Okay. Okay.
And you're welcome to now go ahead and give us a presentation if you've got one queued up.
Hello and good evening. My name is Mickey Hirai. I'm the project architect for 836 Hillside. We have our family here, the Yu family. They are multiple generations, born and raised in Albany, California. The lot has been in the family for over 20 years and they have just been waiting for the right moment to build on it and we hope that that time is now. The Yu family has been serving the East Bay community for over, for a long time with their family-owned restaurant. And they have a growing family with two young children and they want a home that plans for the future as well. This will be their forever home to raise their kids and accommodate future generations, host family gatherings, and they care for aging parents and grandparents. I wanted to talk a little bit about the architectural form and the concept for their home. And it really came about from addressing the challenges of a steeply sloped site while finding a solution within the planning parameters. The key was to provide accessibility on a downsloping lot. It's about a 34% downslope and I just wanted to show in this slide a few other examples of how buildings on the block have solved it. And, you know, you could either sink the building down into the site, but then your house is not very accessible from Hillside Avenue, or you could, you know, have the majority of the house raised up from the, but accessible from the road, but then your rear yard and your yard is not very accessible to the house. So we wanted to propose a project that uses a site to create a gentle path down from the main, from the road into the main living space of the house. And then we also created a front yard, which will provide vegetation and curb appeal for the neighborhood. And then we also retained some soil towards the front of the yard to create a courtyard that the family has very usable outdoor space and they can grow vegetables and flowers and trees and really enjoy the site. Let's see. The building itself, oh, sorry, next slide. The building itself does gradually step down with the site. And yes, it is about seven feet below the maximum height in front. And we did that to make the ease of accessing the entry and the main living space from the garage and the road. And then there's also a path down through the courtyard, like a slow ramp that, you know, could be wheelchair accessible. Next slide. We also did not want to have an abundance of stairs to access the main living space. This section kind of shows the gentle downslope to the driveway and then the garage and then it's just a short run of stairs to the main living space. Let's see. Next, next slide. The location of the courtyard also makes it very usable outdoor space because of the prevailing winds that are coming off of the bay from the south side at the downside of the slope. And the building itself is blocking a lot of wind, so the courtyard area, I think, will be very pleasant. Let's see. Next slide. I did want to clarify some facts about the design and the total habitable space is, well, your calculation said 2292, so it's very modest size for a single-family home. Let's see. And next slide. The actual building footprint is very comparable to the neighboring, the adjacent neighbors and actually a little bit smaller. And this will allow for more permeable site surface. And then I wanted to share a few contextual examples of other contemporary modern homes on Hillside Avenue. This one is about two blocks down and you can see they have geometric forms and large overhangs. And then some of the other ones on the upside of Hillside Avenue show flat roofs and large expanses, expanses of glass and linear, streamlined linear elements and, you know, very geometric simple forms. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Any questions for the project architects?
One question first. Am I, I'm pretty close to this. Have you, did you measure, I'm not 500 feet. I just realized. Did you check to see I was?
I honestly, we didn't check. We can double-check right now.
Well, you would have gotten a postcard from us.
I'm going to be quiet.
We may have a recue as well here. But while, while we're working through that, any other questions?
I have one question. Well, kind of a series of dimensions I'd like to see, and that would be from the grade to the bottom of the deck. And then to the, any change in height at the top of the building.
See, we could look at...
I don't know.
Elevation.
There are some...
We look at the drawing set?
I have to do the math. I guess you have that. It looks like minus five, minus 27, so...
We can...
Bottom of the deck is basically 22 feet up in the air. Is that what I'm reading? That would be even at its highest.
See, the middle of the building, it's about 24 feet.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear, didn't understand that.
At the middle of, the middle section, it's about 24 feet.
Okay. Okay. One, I guess one little question. I know, I'm sure you've noticed there's a fire hydrant right in the front of the, right in the middle of the parcel on the street there.
Yes.
Do you know anything about that and would that be moved and?
We will definitely have to relocate that.
Yeah.
There is a street, there's a street pole on the north side of the lot.
Yeah.
I think.
That would have to be relocated too, huh? Yeah. Okay. Okay. I just saw those, I wondered if you were thinking about that. All right.
I wasn't sure if the fire hydrant was far enough to one side to get the driveway past it, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but I'm not sure. Yeah. Okay. All right. I don't think I have any other questions.
No. Okay. Great. Thank you. We'll go ahead and, are there any cards submitted in for public comment?
We have two.
Okay.
We have, first, John D. Ford.
I've been a resident in Albany for 25 years, adjacent El Cerrito for another 25 years. First of all, I want to say that I don't want to offend this young family, this young couple. I've spoken with their parents in past years. They're currently living at the end of Hillside Avenue, so they're neighbors presently and we're welcoming a young couple. But I do love my view and I'm going to lose a lot of my view. And I have lost a lot of the view with the recent house they bought, they built diagonally to the left. It acts like a big billboard. And view means dollars' value in the house. So I'm losing value in my house, dollar value. We had, on the former house that was built at 850, which is just diagonally left to me, which blocks the also, 32 people out of 33 people on the street, not counting the man building the house, signed a petition requesting that it be in conformity with the other homes on the street where they have the garage and then they go down the street rather than have the garage and put the bedrooms over the garage. And the commission still, at that time, okayed it. I don't think it's a good-looking home, but you can judge for yourself. I have, I'm a part owner of a professional building in El Cerrito. And when we built that, we had to not only be relatively uniform in design, but also even down to the color. And that was 50 years ago. But just saying that, you know, I would like to have, if at all possible, preserve some of my view. The, parking is another issue. I have 175-foot frontage. My one neighbor painted half of my frontage with red paint, which is fine by me because it still had a lot of parking. But now with the new large home and large homes have more requirements on parking, I come home from work and I have nowhere to park. I was pulling up on the curb in the sidewalk, the city recently came by and painted, that red paint was getting faded. The city never, to my knowledge, declared it as a red zone. But now the city came by and when it was fading, they're painting it again because it's on that turn. So now I can't park on the curb there anymore. Probably what the city should consider is any time somebody builds over 2,000 feet, they should have a parking space for each thousand square feet. Because a lot of these 3,000 square foot homes, and I know his only about 2,100, I think he said, but, you have to think about parking, which you already heard about tonight. I have not seen a height hole yet. I really, I was looking for, I thought, well, maybe they just waited till today to put it up, but it still isn't up. I really don't know what the height's really going to be. But coming up over the garage with bedrooms, I'm sure, whatever the rooms are, I'm sure that's going to be a problem. I thank you for your time and all I ask is what can we do to try to save my view? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Yes, we have one more speaker card from Paul Ford.
I'm a resident at 41 Hillside across the street. I just had a couple of comments. Height is of concern due to few homes on that side of the street being built with a second story. Actually, most of the pictures here of the upside to the street, most of the homes on the downhill side exhibit a great degree of consistency and this should be considered. Like I said, most of these pictures are kind of on the upper side of Hillside. Parking at the site is actually cut in half. It's across the street from no parking zone. It's painted red. And this site is also located on a sharp bend, which is already extremely narrow like most streets in Albany. And it's also a sharp bend that people like to drive really fast along. So in thinking about when they build the home, it's hard to imagine a safe stretch of street with multiple trucks parked in front as construction moves forward. Actually, this is a picture of one of the homes on the downside part of the street. It's elevated, but they've been constructing the home for a long time. There's always trucks parked there that kind of is also on a bend that makes it hard to navigate. One other thing I wanted to say was, you know, this is a vista that I think the community as living across from it for many years have enjoyed. That will be gone, which isn't problematic because obviously these people own the property and they should do as they please. But also as a neighbor, as it is a vista that the community enjoys, sometimes people hang out there at night, which, you know, feels a little unsafe and, you know, that will be a positive, you know, as fewer people spend time there in the evening. And I think it could be, you know, a positive to this project. So, thank you.
Any other speakers? Is there anyone else in the audience here to speak on this item? Okay. With that, public comment is closed and we'll go ahead and turn it back to the commission for a discussion. Any initial thoughts?
Let's just start.
Hi. Well, go ahead.
Yeah, my, I have a number of comments. It's a study session, so it's not anything binding. I don't think story polls are required until they're actually submitted an application or should be?
It can be done in one of two ways. If it's new construction, they can do the story polls or they can do a 3D model that they would present to the commission.
Okay, and they've done 3D modeling?
Certainly, if, if at this stage in the process, you feel story polls would be beneficial to demonstrate the scope, you can require them.
I think story polls would be well-nigh impossible to put up, but, you know, that height and that mass way up in the air, I don't know how you do it. Well, let me start by saying, you know, I do appreciate the style of architecture. I don't really have a problem with kind of a more modern architecture and I kind of appreciate the geometric complexity of what you're trying to do. But I think my main problem with this is the way it meets the ground in the back. And kind of the art of building on a hillside is how you meet the ground, especially on the lower side, and that's problematic. You see it all over the Oakland Hills or the old fire zone where you have big blank two-story stucco walls or things like that. So, you know, here, I guess my problem is that there's this big mass, it's 24, 22 feet up in the air. And I think from below, I think that's going to look rather unattractive. And in fact, I was looking at the other house a few doors down. I noticed it a few weeks ago. It's like, what is that big mass doing sticking out on the hillside? And I have to say that I really do not like the one down the street a little bit. I mean, from the street side, it looks like a normal house, but then when you're down, even on Marin Avenue, Buchanan, on Buchanan, it really sticks out kind of like a sore thumb. And I would just like to see the project meet the ground in a, you know, lower and in a more step-down fashion. I don't like that big space underneath it. In my experience, those tend to be just really dead spaces. No sunlight, kind of damp, not a place for activity. I would really like to see like the whole project just kind of sunk down one level. And I think at the street, even though you're within the height limit, I mean, if that bedroom wing at the top was set down lower and the rest of the rooms behind were set down one level each, I think it would be a much more attractive project, much more harmonious with the hillside and much more in keeping with the size and position of the neighboring houses. So that would be my... So that would be my main comment. And I know that entails a lot, a much different design. You know, there are ways to make your house accessible. It takes an elevator on these kind of projects. And residential elevators are less expensive than they used to be. You know, if you're really trying to make it ADA accessible, even your driveway's too steep. So, you know, there's that to think about. And I still see lots of stairs in there. And I do appreciate the idea of multi-generational living. I think that's great. It's fantastic. But there may be other ways to accommodate multiple generations. So that's all I have to say for right now.
So similar to Commissioner McLeod, I think the thing that really struck me about the, well, actually, let me talk about the good things first. I actually, I really like that, you know, relative to a lot of houses on the downhill side of Hillside, that this is really bringing, like, the living space to the street. I really like the incorporation of the courtyard and open space there at the street level. And I agree. I think that, you know, in kind of activating that area, it does add a lot of curb appeal. So I love that feature. I wouldn't want to see this go in a direction of just having the garage at the street level and then a hidden house down the hill. And I think that the design overall is quite attractive. It does seem like the extent to which it juts out in the back and creates the large, open, dead space is, that was also the thing that struck me as the most concerning about the design. And I don't think, you know, from walking around there, it doesn't seem, there aren't a lot of other houses that are like that on the hillside. I think most of the architecture on the hillside does kind of sink into or conform to the hill a little more organically. And I would really like to see, you know, some, I think there are different ways you could do this, but some way that you kind of, that you merge into the hillside a little better or at least limit the extent to which it's jutting out in the back. So that said, you know, again, overall, I do think it's an attractive design. And although, you know, I'm certainly sympathetic to people wanting to preserve their views. This is, you know, well within the envelope of what everyone is permitted by right to build in the area. So I'm not, I do think that the interpretation of measuring the height from the street level, that's how I read the code, and that seems to me to be the right reading. So I'm not actually concerned about the overall height.
Great. Mr. Donaldson?
Sure. Okay, I generally agree with the other commissioners' comments. I, let's see, where to start? I like the contemporary design. I like the style of the architecture that you're looking, you're trying to seek. I think that's good. I do like the idea of having some front yard space on this lot. But I don't feel terribly strongly about that because it might be, I might prefer a design, but I have real problems with the design going both too far up in the front and with the very large, empty spaces at the back that are so far above the ground level. I was on the commission when we approved 850 Hillside some years ago now. It's taken a long, long time to develop, to build, and I think the owner is the contractor on that. And I don't remember right now even how I voted on it. I probably did vote to approve it. But I know we had several study sessions on it, and we really had, the commission had a lot of trouble trying to figure out how that project should be built and FAR issues associated, were associated with that, too. And I really agree with Commissioner McLeod. When seen from Buchanan Avenue, that project is, just looks too bulky and too massive. And I think this would have, would be less, have less of an effect than that one has. But I'm still quite concerned about this. And I, generally speaking, I would like to see that upper level with the master bedroom and the two other bedrooms sort of brought down lower. I think that has to be flipped over and put down underneath the main living, the main living level. And then you might be able to raise the main living level a little bit closer to the street by shortening the driveway or shortening the, and that shortening that front yard space. And I don't know. I'm not an architect, and so I'm sure my comments are presenting architectural problems. But that is something that I really have to say, from a design review standpoint, I really think it's too massive from the front on Hillside. It just goes up too high. And from a sort of a hillside design standpoint, it doesn't lie with the land at all. It doesn't even come close. It's kind of like almost a flat-level, a flat-level house put on stilts in the back. I really think that it's going to have, it should do more to step down the hillside. And I'm afraid you will need more stairs, possibly an elevator. Gee, I know we've approved retrofitted elevators along Pierce Street. I know one house at least has that. And so I know that they are feasible and can be put in, and that might be, that might be a way to go. It's a challenging site. These hillside sites like this are really challenging. And, but I really think it should step down the house, step down the hill more and find and have more of the bedrooms down lower, maybe below the main living space. That, those are my thoughts on that. So, yeah, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's what I want to say. I believe you have like a 15-foot or more setback from the street. And I think we have some flexibility under the zoning guidelines to allow you to come closer to the street. I don't think that 15 feet is required. And if that makes for an easier design and a design that would be less visible from the street face, I would support that. You're going to have a two-car garage. You're going to meet your two-car parking requirements. And I would say the garage door could be closer to the street, and that you wouldn't need to have a large driveway that, where you could, I don't think you're going to need to have four parking spaces, which is kind of what you're close to have, so. Oh, yeah, one other thought I had. If you are going to go above the 0.45 floor area ratio, we require, like, excellent design, and one of those requirements is a landscape plan. You've provided a landscape plan, which is good, and you have a landscaped area in the front. And that's very good. I really, I think that's an excellent amenity and a good street front. But I think your landscape plan should deal with other parts of the lot. And there's a real problem with hillside lots. That space underneath those, that's covered all the time, 365 days a year, is going to be a muddy, it's just going to be dirt. And I don't know how you deal with that. And you probably can't deal with that, really. But it's going to be an eyesore, certainly from the neighbors below you and maybe from other neighbors from the side as well. And then you'll have a backyard that'll have some sun, and it'll be empty space. You'll have at least a 20-foot setback. You're complying with the setback requirements. And some thought needs to go in, but I think, with a good landscape architect, on what can we do to make this space that'll never have any human occupancy, really? People won't be going down there very much. It's not really a backyard. But it should be better than just dirt and weeds. And it's, there must be some plantings that can be put in to make that a more durable, long-term aesthetically appealing, appealing part of the lot. And I think it needs to be addressed in the landscape plan when it comes back to us.
Great. Well, I'll just wrap up with some final comments. I do agree with many of the comments, not all of them. But I would say to first start with the initial question about the height measurement code in TARP, I would also agree that that, that the code should read is taken from the front of the lot line. I think that's sort of the simplest reading, and I don't think there's anything else with that. On that point, I am a little torn about the height at the front. If the code is allowing that height at the front, I think there is some underlying intent that, you know, a 28-foot-tall building at the street is really insinuating at least a two-story-tall structure at the street. So although there's solidly a pattern of one-story buildings, I feel like there's sort of this mismatch between what the rules allow and what the existing pattern is to date. And if we truly do only want one-story buildings fronting the street, then I feel like we should be looking at amending the code to reduce the height. But while, you know, the rules that are before us today do really allow for a two-story structure at the front. So I'm not so horribly concerned about the overall height from there. I think the design is strong as it meets the street and the sort of the entryway, even though it's not a traditional porch, I think it still brings that sort of meeting-the-public-realm element at the front. I would agree, though, with sort of the rest of the building following the topography as the area to focus on, in my opinion, for the next round. And I do think that kind of resonates with, that's the challenge of working on a steep topography, is to really build the building into the hillside. And I think that's where it's lacking a little bit. So although FAR-wise, you may have to repurpose that height in order to achieve building into the hillside, I'm not sure exactly if you guys are completely maxed out on your FAR or not. But I'll leave that up to you guys. I feel like the architecture is excellent in and of itself. I mean, I think we're talking really more about the massing here and how the massing is sited on the site rather than the pure architecture. I think the choice of materials, the depth of the four-inch window reveal, and all of that is great. And I don't really have any issues with that, meaning the exceptional design. I think the sort of the design spirit and intent is all there. Really, for me, it's about following the hillside more than anything. And I would agree with the landscape plan to really flesh that out for the remainder of the lot and think about sort of the 360 view of the house. Because I would agree, seeing, when you get off the freeway and you're looking up at the hill, you can definitely see a lot of the backside of buildings that really look like backside of buildings that were a little bit of an afterthought. And I don't think that's the case here. But just to be extra cognizant about, these properties have a much greater visibility at the back than a lot of the other houses in Albany. So those are my main comments. I don't think it's far off here, and I feel like you guys can take that and run with it. But otherwise, I think it's a high-quality architectural design. That's great to see that being applied for new construction, so. I think that's it. Did you have any?
Can I comment on your comments?
Sure thing.
I'll comment on your comments. On 850 Hillside, I really do want to emphasize that, as I see that as it's been constructed now, I think it just looks too massive. And I think the planning commission at that time, and I was a part of it, I'm guilty, did give too much difference to the fact that we have that 28-foot height limit on Hillside in this location. And I do remember now, there was a petition circulated. We did get a number of homeowners on Hillside had signed saying, "Please don't go high on the downside slots." I remember that, as the speaker has referenced. And we let that building get high. And I know part of the discussion was, well, it's a 28-foot height limit, and they're below it, and they are below it. And this project would be below it. But in retrospect, as I see that building under construction, I really think that it just looks too massive. And that the problem you have with these hillside lots is when you're, the main viewpoints in the community are down below, it just exaggerates the size of the mass. And I think the buildings that we're dealing with there on the downhill slopes should do a lot to step down the hill, and do more to step down the hill than this one does. So that's, that's my thought. I think we have, we have design review jurisdiction here and that we can apply, we can say, look, you know, maybe you have a 28-foot height limit, but let's, for design review purposes, let's stay well below that. I think that's the right pattern of development on these downside slopes, downside lots.
Well, I would agree with that and also apply it to the 40-foot limit. That 40 feet seems very, very high to me. You know, especially when the houses to the right and the left are fairly lower to the ground, fairly more compact. So when this project gets up to 40 feet, sticking way out in the air, you know, I would kind of like to get a sense of what it looks like from the adjacent properties, looking back towards this as it's sticking out. And then I would also like to see maybe just a little more context in terms of a streetscape drawing or more photographs along that street. So I could, I mean, I can always go up there and walk around. But for your next presentation, I think I would like to see a downhill streetscape. I think even by lowering it, you're still going to have all the great advantages of this lot, which are this fantastic view and, you know, amazing view. You're not going to lose that. I mean, I can see the attraction for sitting on that balcony out there. You're going to feel like you're sort of flying above everything. But I don't think you're going to lose that by lowering it. So you're still well above the houses and vegetation below and can take advantage of all those great opportunities. And I will say, from many viewpoints, it's a really attractive project. I like the architecture. And I like the sort of open and closed spaces that you're merging in and out of. I really like that. But again, my big concern is just how it meets the ground and kind of how high it is in the air. And then architecturally, I'm imagining you're going to change this. But for me, the east elevation looks a bit unresolved. It just seems, that side seems fine, but it's the other side. I mean, to me, that just seems like it needs more work. To me, those windows just kind of look arbitrarily placed there. And that is your more or less south side. So I don't know. There should be maybe some more consideration as to how daylight enters the house in the winter. So that's all I have to say.
Great. And did you guys have a follow-up question?
I just wanted to ask one question.
Will you just come up to the mic? Yeah.
Jeff Gibson, the architect on the project. Commissioner Donaldson?
Donaldson, yeah.
I have terrible eyesight. I just wanted to ask you, in your sort of, in retrospect, assessment of 850 Hillside and the 28-foot height limit and that, do you feel like your concerns in retrospect are more about the way that that building looks from below or from Hillside?
Yeah.
Street level? Just to understand that.
Well, it does really stand out from the street level. There's no question about it. And part of it is the coloration of the building and all of that.
Right, right.
But it is, it is quite a bit more massive at the street level than the other homes that are along there, some of which are really have low, I mean, like, no profile.
Right.
Like 846, you can't even see from the street. It's down so low. So my concern more is the way that project looks from when you're walking up Catherine Steps or when you're down on Buchanan as well. It really stands out. It really, really fills that lot.
Yeah, we'll study that.
Now, I drove around. I wanted to see what this would look like from Gate View down below you. And the house on Gate View right below you is built such that you, your project would barely be visible, even with this design, from Gate View. You'd be very much in their view, the homeowner's view, the public view from the street. From, say, Gate View is not, of this lot is not very prominent. And pretty much from the same from Solano, it's not very prominent at all. Your lot is more discreet in its location than 850, for sure.
Right.
But from down in Buchanan and, you know, well, yeah, that's the main space there and some of the other side streets going into it, this is still, lot will still be very visible. And it's important. It's a major lot, so, you know. It's just, it's one of my favorite places to take pictures. I have some... I have some wonderful twilight panoramas from this lot.
You're one of those loiterers. Are there any other comments on this project? Okay. With that, then, we'll close the hearing on this study session, so hopefully you guys got enough to work with and come back. Great. So up next, we are on, sorry, the agenda disappeared here for me, we are on our final item tonight. We are up to item seven, 7-1, which is the proposal for a forum on housing in Albany.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bart Grossman. I'm a member of the Social and Economic Justice Commission, and I appreciate you taking the time for us this evening. SEJC is charged by council to promote housing availability and quality, to review multifamily housing proposals for affordability needs of the community, and to advise the council on social economic justice implications of state and regional housing mandates. So we have a definite interest in housing, and we've been paying attention to what's going on in housing. Another direction from which we see the issue is that we oversee the Berkeley Food and Housing Project, Project Hope institution that we have in the city to deal with homelessness. And in the last quarter, for example, there were about 40 contacts made for people needing housing, and one person was housed. So we have a sense that there's a significant problem. Also, in the last quarter, there were, in our Project Hope drop-in center, there were 60 drop-ins, and of those 40 were related to housing issues. So I don't have to tell you more about the fact that we have a housing problem in the Bay Area, and certainly it affects, it affects the city. At the same time, as you're aware, there are lots of new things happening or potentially happening or maybe happening related to housing changes. SB 330, which is designed to speed up local construction process, SB 68, which promotes accessory units, and SB 50, which may or may not pass, which will have an implication, of course, in terms of design review and the role that the city plays in housing. So there's a lot that's underway, and there's a lot of concern and a lot of misunderstanding about what all this amounts to and what it means for Albany. And so we feel it would be useful to have a forum in the spring where we could provide information to citizens and members of this community about what's going to happen, what the implications are for them, how Albany is going to prepare itself to deal with the changes that are coming, and so that we can begin to really have a dialogue with each other about what the future looks like, what the demands are on us, and what the implications are. So our plan is to hold a forum in the spring. Every year, EBHO holds a housing, an Affordable Housing Week, and it possibly would be part of that, or conceivably right before it, would be an opportunity, first of all, for there to be some tabling so that groups that are working in the area of housing, of various sorts of groups, would have an opportunity to be visible, and people could stop and question them and find out about what they're doing. And then we contemplate an evening session in which we would have a number of speakers. We have a tentative commitment from Nancy Skinner's office and a tentative commitment from EBHO, we'll be looking for additional speakers. And the idea would be basically informational, not a debate, but an opportunity for people to share and learn and have some discussion about where we're headed in the future as the city contemplates a new housing element and other changes that are being mandated. I think that input will be useful. So we're aware that we're not the only commission that has a role to play in housing and thinking about housing, and we felt it was important, as did the council, that we come and talk with you about this and seek your input as to what such an event might be, what might be useful to present, what your thoughts are about how this might be useful for you as well. So I'm basically here to listen.
Great. Thank you. Maybe before we turn it over for discussion, I'll just note for those watching on TV that there's no one here for public comment, so we're not having any. So we'll just turn it back to the commission for conversation.
I don't know, can start. Well, thanks, thanks for coming, and appreciate the reach out from the Social and Economic Justice Commission. I think that's a great idea, and I certainly would support the idea of a forum, and I'm trying, and I will say this, finding affordable housing is such a huge problem, and I'm lost at even how to approach it. And our Planning and Zoning Commission, in such, to such an extent, we're a reactive body. I mean, we, projects come to us and we review them, and that's our role. And we're not very proactive, except in those times when we redo the general plan and do, and that would be, which would include the housing element. And we did that recently, and it'll be coming up again. You're sort of in the mid, in the middle of our housing element period right now. But, I mean, I think if you do have a forum, it would be important to relay to the attendees, to the audience, you know, what's in our current housing element and our general plan, but in a way, it's frustrating that we're so limited in what we can do to control housing affordability and even the construction even of small homes. I mean, we're doing, we're doing pretty well in that, in that area, and that's an area that, small is cheaper to some extent. Probably not cheap enough, but it's cheaper, and we're doing well in that with all of the accessory dwelling units that have been approved, some well over 20, 28 maybe last year. So I feel like we're not doing badly, but we're not even, we're just barely making a dent in the problem. And you're fully aware, as I am, of the SAHA project, and the city's actively involved in that. Planning and zoning is not a leader of that, but it's on city land, and that would be an affordable housing project. And perhaps there are other opportunities in town, other lots or land resources or something like that where we could get more affordable housing projects. I'd love to see it. But I, so, I don't know. I think, I think Planning and Zoning can and should participate, or at least the members individually should know the data for them and come and be there and see what the other speakers say and see whether we can learn something, and maybe start some dialogues about what we can do with updating the housing element, finding sites, other options. I was at a meeting, I guess it was just yesterday, actually, for, in Albany, that Vice Mayor McQuaid puts together every now and then, meets the St. Albans Church, and I was there as a member of the Albany Community Foundation, but housing was talked about then, and there were representatives from Supervisor Carson's office were there, and I think that was it from outside of Albany area. But there was talk about housing vouchers and the Section 8 program and how the federal government is cutting back on it, and yet there's a whole bureaucracy there, the whole bureaucracy there that knows how and can distribute housing vouchers, and we need more of those, I think. That would help. I love the idea of being able to integrate lower-income people into the fabric of the whole community rather than have them in, you know, in a public housing project, I think. And I favor housing voucher kind of programs, but that's not the bailiwick of Planning and Zoning, really. So, I don't know. What other commissioners think? Those are my initial thoughts, anyway. Thank you.
I just want to chime in a couple of things you said that are good points. I think a lot of people think, yeah, like, we have more power than we do, and they're kind of ignorant of the market rate, how this is all market-driven, and, you know, we just respond. And so people say, "Why don't you build high-rises on San Pablo? Why don't you..." We can't do that, so I personally go out there and purchase a property and do it. And the city has to have some sort of, you know, we're not big enough to have really enticing kind of, you know, we don't have any pools of money to grab from to help that. And I think if the public knows the process, so if there may be private developers, both affordable housing developers and market-rate developers talk about how they look for sites and what they, and what they need, and get them understanding that, you know, this is a very complex thing. We're all kind of fitting our little cogs in this big machine that we can't stop and we can't control. It's just happening. And, you know, and there's really no one to blame, really. I think a lot of blame goes around, and people get blamed, unfortunately, because they don't have any control. That would be, people understand people, what they can do and what they can't do, and maybe the things we can do or not, that would be good to know. So.
Great. Thank you.
Sure, I'll echo that. I actually think that's really important to explain to folks what does it mean when we talk about affordable housing and how it gets built, and understanding sort of gap financing that's necessary in order for people to actually make affordable housing work. So I think having, like, affordable housing developers come in and talk about, you know, so like TCAC financing and all those different things that either come from the state or from the federal government, and currently, you know, clearly the federal government is reducing and reducing the amount of financing options. So I think to be able to explain that is really critical, and I think, you know, that's sort of the bucket of how do we build affordable housing, but then talking about, certainly in Albany, like, what's our role in Albany to the housing, within the housing crisis? And I think a really important part of it is thinking about sort of transit-oriented development. One of the great aspects of Albany is that it's somewhat suburban but somewhat urban, and you're sitting in this nice sweet spot of having a lot of walkability but still having sort of, you know, a large proportion of single-family homes, and you've got easy access to transit. And so I think really talking about how can we increase normal market-rate development in Albany is also important so that, you know, folks aren't having to, from sort of an economic justice perspective, the more we can build closer in and reduce people's commutes and closer to jobs, I think there's inherently a lot of equity built into that of increasing density. You know, even if it is not affordable, I think there's a component of increasing the supply of housing choice options closer to transit so that people aren't having to do, you know, two-hour commutes, you know, in from Antioch to San Francisco or things of that nature, and certainly the accessory dwelling unit program. And so I think to kind of bucket it in terms of, you know, there's new construction of market rate, what's the local sort of affordable housing requirements associated with market-rate development, how do affordable housing developers choose, acquire, finance sites, what are the constraints and the challenges and the regulatory process? How do we build more just normal market-driven housing in Albany, which I think has been probably most of what we've been seeing here? And I think a lot of that comes down to regulatory framework, which I actually think we do a really good job on here of, you know, getting things sort of adjudicated fairly quickly, having pretty clear rules, sort of the lack of ambiguity and giving people certainty in the process, I think, is helpful in that. And then sort of the bucket of accessory dwelling units that are inherently cheaper because of size. I think to explain that there's kind of these different buckets of different housing typologies out there that all have different sort of market levers and constraints, and what those are, and like where we can be most impactful. I certainly think there is a larger, sort of more regional conversation about San Pablo that I think we could be a participant in. I think San Pablo in general is filled with soft sites that are ripe for both, all kinds of housing but of a higher-density caliber. So I think that would be a great conversation if there's a forum that's bringing in folks like, what's her name, Nancy Skinner and company, to have that kind of conversation about sort of regional planning around that would be helpful. But, yeah, I think a lot of people just don't totally understand that when they say affordable housing, they don't always know what they mean. And so I think to really make sure there's a shared language of what do we, you know, that vouchers are different than affordable housing, that's part of a market-rate project is different than affordable housing development that's financed in a totally separate way, and to kind of get a shared language, I think, is really helpful for the community as well. Those are my general thoughts.
Thank you.
Sure.
Those are all really good thoughts, and I won't take a lot of time to add on. I will just say, I like the idea of using the forum as a way to kind of emphasize what is Albany's role in addressing the housing crisis, and, you know, I think a large part of that is talking about the role of the housing element and the sort of long-term planning that goes into the goals that the city sets, and then how that kind of filters down to, you know, zoning decisions, and then how that affects decisions about what, you know, kinds of projects people actually decide to bring forward for their properties. So I think there's, you know, there's so many ways you can go, you know, just like, I think even just the topics that we, that you've heard raised here and that you started off mentioning could easily take, you know, many weeks to cover in any kind of depth. So I think that, you know, kind of among the universe of things that would be helpful to focus on, really bringing it home to, you know, what is our local community's role and what is already happening, and then, you know, what are ways that individuals in the community can be involved in, you know, providing input to that long-term planning process as well.
Yeah, I agree with, you know, almost everyone's comments, but we do have an opportunity to shape our code, our planning code, and we're going to do it with our San Pablo-specific plan, so that's all on the table. And that is an opportunity for us to really shape kind of the envelope which in, within which these affordable housing units can fit. And I think this symposium, or whatever you want to call it, outreach seminar, outreach meeting, really would be great if it could build support for higher density. And in so many ways, Albany's been stuck at a very low height limit along San Pablo and elsewhere, three stories. So I think we have to start reaching out to the public about higher building heights, much higher, perhaps six stories. Maybe we have to figure out how to encourage affordable housing units or very low affordable units within market-rate buildings, which is mostly how it's done. It's going to be mostly market-rate units and then some percentage of either low or very low affordable units. And how to get that mix, that's not something I'm really, I couldn't tell you how to do it right now, how to get that economic mix in terms of what a developer would do, but I think we have to really work with the public on accepting higher height limits. And, you know, that could be a challenge. It's been a challenge in the past. So maybe the broader community supports it, but maybe immediate neighbors will oppose it, so there's going to have to be some sort of balance where we're reaching out to everybody and getting a lot of different opinions and getting everybody involved. There's also a lot of opportunities for integrating transit with housing, and that also means physical changes, protected bike lanes, mobility hubs within affordable housing projects, all sorts of other things, car shares. There may be, you know, bike rooms, car shares with subscriptions involved, I mean, all sorts of other options. So there are other ways we can increase density in Albany and increase housing, and that would be through our plan development areas that would apply to Solano Avenue and maybe other streets. So I think there is a planning role that we have, but it will depend on public support to pass some of those measures. So whatever we can do to... So, whatever we can do to generate that support would be great.
And I can just piggyback one comment onto what you were saying. I also think it would be helpful, and I don't know if it's in this initial forum or how many sessions, because again, this is a very meaty topic. But, I do think it's critical to sort of have the conversation that we can't increase affordability without understanding that there are going to be some changes how we all collectively live. And I always talk about, you know, you can't have a really, really dynamic, vibrant urban environment and have no traffic and easy parking. Those things are kind of incongruous. You, and similarly, you know, with affordable housing, if we need to build density, we can't have things two stories tall. And so, to have this conversation about what some of these tough trade-offs are that we're going to have to sort of come to reckon with as a community of, are you willing to lose a little view? Are you willing to lose a little direct sunlight in exchange for increasing affordability in your community? Are you willing to park a little farther away for a really vibrant commercial corridor? And I think to realize that we don't just get affordable housing without having to have some of those tough conversations. And I think opening that up and really having that honest conversation, that these things are integrated and there's a reason that, you know, a lot of communities haven't built affordable housing over times and there's a lot of loaded issues inherently in that. But, some of it is some of these quality of life things of having taller heights, having bigger bulks and certainly some of those things with great architecture can be minimized and tweaked around the edges. But, the end of the day, you still can't build one-story and two-story buildings and increase a whole bunch of housing production. So, I think it's really important in this forum to start having some of those really hard conversations about, you know, and I think it's interesting, we, different subject, but similar, had this conversation briefly about cannabis, about how, you know, the city on the, you know, larger election voted at a really high percentage to legalize it, but no one wants it in their community. And these things, I think, are the natural tension to some of these topics. And I think it's really important to just have that honest conversation about what some of these trade-offs are. So, anyhow, that's just the little add-on.
And I think it goes to a, kind of a re-envisioning of San Pablo Avenue, which is a much more built-out, kind of much more dynamic, much more pedestrian-oriented, hopefully, boulevard. I mean, a real urban boulevard.
It'd be less ugly and smelly.
Instead of just kind of a pass-through for people. I mean, it, most of the people that are on San Pablo driving are passing through. But, creating a different urban vision for San Pablo, I think that's part of it as well. Solano two can be upgraded, although maybe to a lesser height limit. But, there's an opportunity there to add density. And, and then I think we need to figure out how, if there are new housing projects, multifamily, that we figure out a way, either through density bonuses or somehow to get very low-income units in there, in the mix. I think that's what leads to better economic health and a better vibrant society and means people who work at CVS Pharmacy can afford to live nearby or people that work as, you know, in medical clinics or whatever, that, you know, that can, you know. We're our kids. Our kids.
Our children have. So.
They're all low-income, right?
A lot of, a lot of great reasons to afford affordable housing and to actually try to do it. So, that's a challenge.
If I could, I'll add a couple more, another thought, a couple more thoughts. Let's see, in your, if you're putting together a forum, a thought, and it may, may not be a good one, but you, you, you're doing this forum. But, I would, I think there might be some valuable information or insights you might be able to get from our neighbors on both sides. Berkeley is a bigger city and Berkeley is doing a lot of housing and they're doing a lot of housing on San Pablo. And I know some of the projects, I've actually worked as a consultant for them on, on some of the projects, some housing around there. Not a lot of it has been affordable and it's mostly market rate. And, and I don't know what they're doing in the affordable area, the affordable area. And El Cerrito now has a new, new zoning ordinance, new specific plan, form-based zoning down there, which is very, very different than the kind of zoning we have in our community. And I think there's a lot going on in El Cerrito. We had a report from El Cerrito last year and I think a lot has happened since then. What is happening with respect to affordable housing, I'm not sure. But, that, anyway, by introduction or as part of your forum or some input into your forum, something of that, it might be good for, to set the perspective of what's coming from both our neighbors, both of whom are larger than us. And then my last comment is, I'm thinking, I'm talking about affordability. I'm thinking of Councilmember Barnes had a blog a while back and he, I read him. He appointed me here. And it had, it was interesting and he, his, sort of the theme, I think, if I remember correctly, of his blog was, we really don't have a housing crisis. We have an affordable housing crisis. And he made a distinguishing between the two of them. So, and that, that's very much in line with the traditional thinking that's going on here, is you build a, build a building, a multi-use building with fifty units, fifteen percent of them will be affordable or twenty percent of them be affordable. You argue about the numbers. And I guess the thesis that he was promoting then is, well, that's not enough. You know, we, we're building market rate housing. We need to build more affordable housing than we're doing. And the percentages that are kind of coming out, it's, are not enough. And that's the crisis is in finding affordable units. And in a way, the ADUs that Albany's doing are, are on point there, if they're affordable. We don't know what people are renting them out for and they may be able to rent them out at such high rents that they're not affordable. But, they're certainly small and that is in the line that some of those are probably affordable.
Well, and I think, piggybacking off of that, I think it's one of the important reasons to have a conversation about financing of affordable housing. Because although I don't think anyone would disagree that we have a shortage of affordable housing, I think the real question is, well, who's going to pay for that gap financing? And so, right now, the method of, of building affordable housing is by letting market rate developers build market rate that they can make profit on and they're cross-subsidizing. And if you get rid of the market rate cross-subsidy, who's, who's picking up that tab? And I think that's the difficult question. And certainly if that, you know, if we were all getting checks cut from the state or from the federal government to, to do that, that would be no problem, but we aren't. And so, I think that's really the question of where do we find that funding if we're not promoting market rate development to subsidize it? So, I think explaining the financing is really, really a critical part of people understanding, you know, what we do. And by not building market rate housing, at least in most cities, and, you know, certainly, you know, one unit at a time isn't necessarily doing anything for our affordable housing crisis. But, in larger cities where you're building much higher density, that's really the major driver of, of building affordable housing. So, anyhow, that's the only.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks.
It's been very useful. I've got some very good ideas from you and which I will incorporate. And we will keep you connected and posted on what we do and how it evolves. And I can't resist, I just have to say one thing, which is that if we're interested in getting people to accept higher density, we have to stop focusing on all the negative possibilities and talk about some of the positive things that can come from higher density. Because we, you know, we present it to people as if, we know this is going to be awful for you, but, you know, and it doesn't have to be. I mean, I grew up in New York City and it wasn't the end of the world to live in a big apartment building. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks for staying so late. With that, if I pull back up the agenda, I think we are on final announcements. Any announcements other than next week's upcoming study session?
That's it.
Great, so we have, as we said at the beginning of the hearing, we have a study session this time next Wednesday.
This time next Wednesday will be the only item on the agenda, so.
Great, seven PM.
And how will that work? Will it be a presentation from staff and?
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide you the agenda and a staff report on Friday, as we typically would. And then, we're going to do a fairly brief presentation and really let the developer explain the project scope and their intention behind the design. And I, for whatever it's worth, I do expect we'll have a pretty full house. The folks at the, on Pierce Street have had various emails and some stuff we were copying on, some stuff we were excluded from, so.
So, you expect a?
I expect a crowd, yeah.
Great, with that, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.